Good morning. I want to welcome you to -- shhh. I want to welcome you to today's council meeting. It's Friday, December 6th. Want to welcome everybody to the lovely Valley. That's where we are today. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll and we'll get started?
Bloomingfield Bonn and Buscagino Sodio, Ingrida Fuentes, Weezer, Karas, Kocorian, Labaj, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Westen, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Price moves, Labon seconds, next.
Committee to resolutions for approval.
Bloomingfield moves, O'Farrell seconds. That brings us where? Time to go through the agenda or?
Yes.
Well, why don't we do that? Let's go through the agenda.
Items one through three are items which public hearings have been held.
Members, items one through three, any specials? Okay, I don't see any, so let's prepare to vote on those items. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, now let's move on to the next section of items.
Items four through six are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items four, five, and six.
Okay, so we'll hold those. Members, okay, there are no members in the queue for -- at this time, so why don't we vote on the remaining items? Let's open the roll.
Mr. President, there are no remaining items in that section.
Oh, we -- okay. All right, so let's hold that and that would bring us to presentation.
One more item on the continuation agenda. Item seven is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Required for consideration.
Okay, then without objection, that item is before us.
And there are cards on that item.
I was getting ready to say, assume that that's the case. Okay, so that brings us back to presentations, correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
So let me check with Michael and Bob. Are you guys ready? You have a joint presentation?
They were born ready.
And I believe that. Okay, so now I would like to give the floor to Mr. Bonn and to Mr. Bloomingfield for And to Bob and to Michael, I see you have a couple of old friends of mine that are here, so it was good to see them today. So with that said, Mr. Bloomingfield, the floor is yours.
Great. Good morning, colleagues. In the nearly fifty years since the personal computer was launched at the 1964 World's Fair, computing technology has revolutionized every aspect of our lives, becoming an integral part of our culture. In that time, computer science has emerged as a transforming industry, creating new fields of commerce, driving innovation in all fields of science, and bolstering productivity in established economic sectors. Today, computer science is foundational science for the digital age that we live in. And in a world where access to technology is no longer a privilege, but really it is a right that folks need to have if they're going to be able to succeed. In our city, in our nation, that's what we need to be competitive. It's never been more important for our students to receive thorough preparation in computer science education. That's why, for me personally, I've been involved in this issue as an Assembly member. I authored, as you guys know, some of whom, folks who are up here, were working with me on big bills to create digital textbooks, allow those in schools, bills for online education, and a number of other pieces of legislation to try to move forward this idea of getting our students ready and for the digital age. And as Chair of the IT Committee and with my two members on the IT Committee, Mr. Bonn and Mr. O'Farrell, we're really committed to moving forward technologically, whether it's the Wi-Fi initiative or doing other things like that. That's why, as part of Computer Science Education Week, which kicks off on Monday, I'm proud to help honor the efforts of many who have come together to tackle the challenges of enriching computer science education in Los Angeles, including attracting more participation of women and minorities. I'm pleased to be joined this morning by Dr. Todd Ula, an administrator at the LAUSD, and Fred Humphries, the Vice President of Government Affairs for Microsoft, who this week, along with Code.org and UCLA staged the Hour of Code at the 54th Street Elementary School as part of a national effort to help children learn more about computer science. We're really pleased about their commitment to ensuring Los Angeles meets the requirements of the digital age. They set an incredible example as leaders across Los Angeles. We have some certificates for them, but I want to turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Bonn for a few words before we do the certificates.
Thank you very much. Good morning, colleagues. Like Mr. Bloomingfield, I'm very excited to be celebrating what we are celebrating here today. This is part of just an acknowledgement of one piece of the incredible birth and growth of technology here in Los Angeles. I'm so fortunate to be able to represent the emerging Silicon Beach tech sector in Venice and in Mar Vista and in West LA. And I'm particularly happy that in the past few months, Microsoft has moved in to Playa Vista and is now part of the 11th District and is part of the Silicon Beach tech sector. But it is very important that technology and Silicon Beach not be limited to the West Side. We've got to start expanding this out to the rest of the city, to all of your districts, so that the right that Mr. Bloomingfield talked about is also a reality. I'm so glad to have Microsoft and all of the other companies in the 11th District, and I look forward to them employing people not just from the West Side, but from throughout the city. I look forward to them sharing the richness of the technology and all the tools and the experience that they have with the rest of Los Angeles. And so it's just a great day to be celebrating what they bring to Los Angeles.
Before we do the certificates, would either of you like to say a word or two?
Good morning, Mr. President, Weston, members of the council. On behalf of the partnership between Los Angeles Unified School District, UCLA, and Code.org, I am honored to accept this recognition for our work together to bring more emphasis to our children and the community regarding computer science. We, the partnership, and I represent today, and the communities that we all serve, thank you for your recognition today and the resolution or the proclamation that embraces the Hour of Code, a national effort to help children learn more about computer science. As you know, Computer Science Education Week is observed each year in the recognition of the birthday of computing pioneer Admiral Grace Murray Hopper, a woman born in 1906, as part of Computer Science Education Week. Next week, students across the nation will participate in an Hour of Code, a self-guided activity that will allow them to try out the basics of computer science. It is a national, I think it's in the national interest to prepare our students for all areas of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. In California alone, next, by 2018, seventy-one percent of the jobs in our state are going to be based on computer science and STEM education. So it's very important that we all recognize it, join hands, and begin this process of educating our children for the STEM areas, specifically computer science, where there are going to be a lot of jobs in this area. So on behalf of our partnership, we'd like to thank you today for this recognition, Councilman Bloomingfield and Councilman Bonn. Thank you.
I'll be real brief. Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Weston. Thank you to both councilmen. It's just not for students when we think about make computer science count in the Hour of Code. We, Microsoft, are very pleased to be partnering with Code.org. As was just stated, I think it's kind of interesting that it was two women that started with the whole Computer Science Week, and it's so, so important as we think about underrepresentation when it comes to computer science, it's something that we have to address. For myself, I will actually be doing an Hour of Coding next week in Washington DC with some students. And my whole team, as well as many others at Microsoft, are going to be participating and going to schools to do coding too. So maybe a little challenging call to action. If you have a little bit of time, we'd be glad to work with you to do a little bit of Hour of Coding, because everyone needs to, you know, get an understanding when it comes to technology and coding, because it's a prerequisite to anything that you do today so that you can be the next Bill Gates or Mark Zuckerberg when it comes to coming up with the next app or next innovation. Great to be here and thank you very much.
Thank you. Could everybody give them a round of applause, I mean, for all that they've done and will Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm proud today to be joined by a truly wonderful organization, Jewish Vocational Services, or JVS. For eighty-two years, JVS has been dedicated to doing something that sounds simple, but in reality is quite challenging, providing opportunities for people to find jobs at all stages of their life. It was founded in response to the Great Depression, and JVS has been working ever since to provide opportunities to those who face obstacles in entering the workforce. JVS has opened its doors to all people regardless of age, race, ethnicity, gender, military service, or religion. Jewish Vocational Service helps everyone, not just members of the Jewish community. And with career resource centers and work source centers across Los Angeles, including in the Fifth Council District, JVS continues its long tradition of empowering individuals to achieve dignity and independence by finding gainful employment for people at all stages of their life. And I've worked with them for almost thirty years, starting in the 1980s when I was with the city of West Hollywood and they did amazing things in that city. JVS has a wide range of programs that further the goal of workforce development, job training and mentoring for veterans and the disabled. Some of these programs include LeadingHire.org, a free online service that connects job seekers with employers. Through these centers, seekers receive information and get help with resume preparation, cover letters, and interview preparation. Another program includes the HealthWorks Program in partnership with the American Red Cross to train individuals for entry-level careers in the healthcare industry. Today, we're here to recognize the success of JVS's Bankworks Program. By preparing job seekers for positions in the financial services industry, JVS guides individuals towards their first step on an exciting new career path. Through targeted job training, placement support, and post-employment coaching, the eight-week intensive course prepares individuals with the necessary skills for success. The Bankworks Program recently celebrated its fortieth graduating class and its five-hundredth job placement with partner banks including Bank of America and Wells Fargo, both of which are here today to support Bankworks. In addition, JVS Bankworks Program recently won the Project Collaboration Award at the 2013 LA Business Journal Nonprofit and Corporate Citizenship Award. These major accomplishments are milestones that deserve to be honored. And I would say, I hope everyone here, if you're not making use of JVS's services, this is an opportunity for all our council offices to help provide jobs to our residents. Before I present a proclamation honoring JVS and Bankworks, I'd like to invite JVS's Chief Operating Officer Claudia Finkel to share her thoughts and also to introduce all the folks here today.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. President and members of the City Council. My name is Claudia Finkel. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for JVS. I want to begin by thanking Councilmember Karas for this wonderful recognition this morning and honoring our Bankworks Program. Today, we have an award-winning job training and placement program serving recently returned veterans, at-risk youth, foster youth, people with disabilities, as well as long-term unemployed and through our work source centers. JVS Bankworks Program successfully provides individuals for careers in the financial services industry. The intensive eight-week program serves the entire Los Angeles work source center system by actively recruiting and training primarily low-income and disadvantaged workers seeking employment. This is a demanding program. Our graduates are fully prepared, enthusiastic, and highly qualified to launch their new careers. Just a few weeks ago, we graduated our fortieth Bankworks class and reached a milestone which we're being honored today. Seven hundred graduates to date with five hundred individuals in jobs with our banking partners. Today, the council is honoring not only a signature program, but a model of a public-private partnership. At every one of our forty-eight graduations, recruiters from our ten banking partners are waiting to interview and hire these graduates. Today, joining us today on behalf of our founding donor is Sarah Leiting. She's right there. She's the Executive Director of the Sherry and Les Biller Family Foundation, along with two of our strongest partners, Wells Fargo and Bank of America. I'm very, very pleased to introduce John Satuda and John Montez, Senior Vice President for East Los Angeles Region Bank of America. And I forgot to introduce John's title, so forgive me. He is the Regional President for Los Angeles Metro and Orange County for Wells Fargo. On that note, I want to thank the council for hearing us this morning, and I'll let them have a few moments.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Karas, and thank you to the entire City Council for the recognition. I'm proud I'm here to recognize the great work that JVS Bankworks is doing, making a difference in so many lives as young men and women in our communities, helping prepare them for jobs and careers in the financial services industry, making a difference in our communities. As you will hear, many of the individuals that come through the Bankworks Program are some of the most underserved communities. And make a difference for Wells Fargo. We have many, many young men and women who've come to work for Wells Fargo, like Caro, who'll be speaking just a few minutes. We've had, just this year alone, forty, over forty new hires at Wells Fargo that are coming through the JVS Bankworks Program. And what's amazing with the program, what's amazing with the opportunities it opens is Caro joined Wells Fargo after graduating February 2012. I was pleased to hear this year he's already been promoted from a teller to a new accounts individual, customer sales and service representative. And then we talked about the opportunities that JVS and Bankworks Program are giving to young men and women in our community. So thank you, Claudia. Congratulations for the great work.
Thank you, council as well. John really hit on a lot of key points. I want to thank JVS. I want to thank the Bankworks Program for really what they're doing, I think, in our community is very much aligned with some of the needs that we see at Bank of America. If you look at college courses, you look at high school courses, one of the things you're not going to find is a lot around financial literacy, a lot building of the financial acumen of some of the younger people coming out of school. And that really reflects, I think, some of the needs of our community. And JVS does a great job with the Bankworks Program. Like John, we're very pleased with every, all the recruits that come out at Bank of America, and we're very focused on working with partners like Wells Fargo and the entire financial services industry in trying to build better money habits from our customers, our communities. And a great example of that is the hires. And so also pleased to announce that our graduate, Sam, who was recruited and a part of the Bankworks Program in the graduating class of February, has also been promoted. And that's just a testament to the quality of the program. That doesn't necessarily happen in every case, and so it's really a great people like Sam that come out of the program that I'm most pleased to really have honored here today. And when you hear from the participants, I think you all will see the type of quality of individual we're talking about, but thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Caro. I'm currently working at Wells Fargo. Before Bankworks Program, I was unemployed for about a year. I was getting interviews by myself at banks and I was not being very successful. I was introduced to JVS Bankworks by two of my friends who were recent, who were graduates from JVS. After I took the course, JVS gave me the proper training, how to, you know, pass my interviews, and it also gave me the confidence. After having a few interviews, I got multiple job offers from multiple financial institutions, and I went with Wells Fargo. And I love my life. Thank you to JVS, and I'm doing great working up there, and hopefully a lot of more other students will be where I am today. Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name is Samuel. I'm a sales and service specialist with Bank of America. I first heard about Bankworks from a friend who was also a graduate. He graduated and now works with City National Bank. I was bouncing around between jobs before I was hired, and for my first interview with Bankworks, I knew that they were serious. They set clear expectations of me. I was definitely, I knew I was prepared for Bankworks after the program. I knew that the skills that I learned, how to communicate, listen, empathize, and really had an interview with confidence. My first interview, there was four Bankworks students and one person who was not from He did certain things during the interview that we were trained not to do, and it really stood out. My second interview was with Bank of America. There was a group of twenty people, and I was the only person from Bankworks. I felt great. The interview went very well, and even afterwards, other applicants came to me and said, "You did a great job." I was hired in February of this year. I was promoted in July to a sales and service specialist. Bankworks gave me an opportunity I didn't see for myself, but now I'm enjoying my life. I'm enjoying my new career, and I'm just thankful to JVS, the partners, and the donors for making this opportunity for my life.
Well, thank you, everyone, and now I'm honored to present this proclamation on behalf of the city and City Council to JVS and Bankworks for all their amazing work. So let's give them a big hand.
We're going to switch quickly and try to do a couple of our items on the agenda. We're going to do item four. Arnold, Mr. Sax, are you still around? Yeah, okay, so if I could have Mr. Sax and Mr. Walsh come forward on item four. Yes, sir?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sax. And I have addressed the Rent Escrow Program several times and the violations and the use of the personnel to assess the violations. And yes, it's a wonderful program, but the Rent Escrow Program, the number of places that need inspection and reduce, yet the number of foreclosed properties within the city have increased, and yet no violations have been issued against them at a thousand dollars a day. It's the use of your funds to the best benefit. What's the best benefit for the public? Is it to go out and inspect houses? Yes? Or is it to go out and inspect houses that have been foreclosed and disrepair and get a thousand dollars a day? And none have been collected, no fines.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org or JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com. As far, I've been a renter in Los Angeles since 1976, and there are problems, but it's not the REAP. You know, when I get up here, sometimes I praise you when you deserve it, and sometimes I vilify you when you deserve it. So you don't know what I'm going to say. I'm not going to carp. The REAP program protects me. If I lived in Glendale, I would have no rights as a renter. I live in Los Angeles, and I have rights as a renter. And my landlord isn't half-bad. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you. Okay, let's, let me wait a moment. Okay, so I'd like to ask Mr. Kocorian to come forward for a presentation. So, Mr. Kocorian? Oh, I didn't vote on for, so let's vote first. Let's open the roll. No, I'm not going to vote on it. Anyway, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Yeah, the city attorney and the clerk panic, you got to vote on it? I was just testing you guys, that's all. Okay, Mr. Kocorian, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'd like to ask President Sue Carleo and the Sue Carleo Fan Club to join me, please, if everybody could come on up to the podium. It's with great pride, Mr. President, but also a little bit, more than a little bit of sadness, that I would like to bring before you Sue Carleo, the president of Los Angeles Valley College, who has announced her retirement from Valley and will be leaving us. Sue has been such an institution for the San Fernando Valley since she became president of Valley in 2008, that it's hard for me to imagine a post-Carleo era, but I guess we're all going to have to start getting used to that possibility, that reality. Valley College has been such a central part of the San Fernando Valley since it opened in 1949 as the second higher educational institution in the San Fernando Valley, coming close on the heels of Pierce's opening. It was a very different time in the Valley back then, when this was pretty much an agricultural institution. Now, Valley serves eighteen thousand students. President Carleo oversees a budget of over fifty million dollars, and this is truly a place, as we've heard in the other presentations about the need for workforce development, this is a place that is an engine of the economic future of the San Fernando Valley, and never more so than under the leadership of Sue Carleo, who has focused so much of her attention on making Valley a partner of the San Fernando Valley business community. And it's for that reason and many others that she was actually recognized in 2009 by the San Fernando Valley Business Journal with its Women in Business Education Leadership Award because of the close relationship that she's developed between the business community and the college. But for all of us who represent community organizations of all stripes in the Valley, we know that Valley College under Sue Carleo has always been a partner, a place with open doors to the community, a place that's always done outreach to the community and invited the community to the campus, and for that, we're also very, very appreciative. This has been a tumultuous time that Sue has led Valley. They've been going through a six-hundred-million-dollar renovation and construction project which she has overseen with she has overseen with all of its trials and tribulations. It has been a tremendous contribution to the San Fernando Valley to have these new buildings being built, the sustainable models of sustainable construction that are going up in Valley College, and that's all been under Sue's leadership. So it's really a moment for us to celebrate all that she's accomplished. It's also a moment of sadness for me to see you go, Sue. But I just want to thank you on behalf of all of the residents of Council District Two and the entire San Fernando Valley. I want to thank you for your extraordinary leadership as an educator, as a community leader, as a business leader in the San Fernando Valley. I want to congratulate you on all you've accomplished. Thank you and wish you well as you enter into this next stage of your life as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a word to Sue?
There's no college president who declines the opportunity to say a few words, so I will keep it short. But first of all, council members, colleagues in the audience, thank you very much for allowing us to be here with you all today. I would like to just acknowledge a few folks who are behind me. First of all, my husband, Frank Carleo, who's been my partner for 45 years. Thank you for all the support. And many of the faculty, staff, administration, and foundation board members are with me as well this morning. Thank you, Councilman Krikorian, for being such a great friend of Valley College. You certainly have made my job much easier over these past five years. And it is clear to me that you understand the importance of the connection between education and work, and how these partnerships go hand in hand. We are all better served by your commitment as well, so it really does work together that way. You know, when I was a young girl growing up, my father used to say, "Many hands make light work." And like all good fathers, he wanted his children to understand that if we all worked together on our chores, things would get done. This principle actually guided me as president of Valley College. This year, the college is celebrating its 65th anniversary, and it has built a legacy with many of you in this room being part of that legacy, graduates, faculty, as well as alums, family members, friends. You know what Valley College is all about and how important it is to this area. The strength of the college is truly evidenced by the success of our alums that came out of the many hands working together of the faculty, staff, administration, and foundation board that is represented here today. Sustaining this effort is essential, and although I won't be there as president, I know that I will certainly always do what I can to help the college move forward for future generations. I chose a career as a community college educator at Valley College because I fully believe in public higher education as the key to the success of our community. It has been a privilege and an honor to work in that capacity, in that, in this field for 40 years. And I hope that my legacy is making a difference to make Valley College a little bit of a better place. Thank you again, Councilman Krikorian, for this wonderful honor. And for all of you in Los Angeles who share my commitment to public higher education, please know that you are adding those many hands to make the world better. Thank you.
Congratulations. Mr. Krikorian, before you move any further, I'd like to recognize Mr. Tom Labange.
President Carleo, Paul, what a great presentation, all of you there. I'm a Los Angeles City College. Transferred to Cal Poly, transferred to Cal State Los Angeles. But community colleges are our key to success in so many people, and I know all our members do support community colleges, but to salute you for what you do, and I thank you for your partnership in community with Friday Night Lights and allowing your fields to be used by other schools, which is just a great event. Good job. And where's Dr. Hoffman? I don't know. He's probably at Water and Power, but I know him from his years at Valley College, Abe Hoffman. So thank you, good retirement, and the community colleges truly are the way. So we really want to thank you. Thank you, thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Just real quick, Sue, you know, I've gotten to work with you on, in many different capacities over the years, on a host of different projects, and you've always been just so professional and so stellar. Even though Mr. Krikorian, you know, said it all, I just feel like I had to add my voice because we've had such a great relationship over the years. So thank you for all that you've done, all that you do, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Krikorian, back to you.
Thank you, members. Thank you, Mr. President. So on behalf of the mayor and the city council of Los Angeles, as well as all the people of the San Fernando Valley and our city, I'd like to present this resolution, Sue, to congratulate you on all of your incredible achievements and to wish you all the best in your retirement as well. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Again, congratulations. Ms. Martinez, would you be ready to move forward with yours? Okay. Now we'd like to defer to Ms. Martinez.
Before I get started, Mr. President, I'd like to welcome Captain Minso from Van Nuys Police Station, who's with us. Captain Minso, good morning. I see you brought your fan club.
Yes, sir.
We are here to celebrate the 25th anniversary of the Orlida Looky Looz. In December of 1988, 15 to 20 members of the community, under the leadership of Harry Williams, who unfortunately is too ill to be with us here today, held their first meeting. And ever since, they've been the eyes and ears of their neighborhood. The Orlida Looky Looz is proof that Neighborhood Watch groups really work. For all these years, the Orlida community has benefited from the good relationship with LAPD and from the critical work of the Looky Looz. And in recognition of their founding member, the Looky Looz have established the Harry Williams Honor Award to honor all the great work in Orlida. So far, the recipients have been Terry Hendricks and Lamar Shelby. But the Orlida Looky Looz is not just a crime prevention group. They also work tirelessly to beautify the community. Mr. Williams and Mr. Terry Hendricks were considered the graffiti busters of the Orlida community. They would drive around the Orlida community, removing all types of graffiti and bulky items on a daily basis. During the holiday seasons, the Looky Looz again do their part to help their fellow Orlida residents by running a food collection drive and encouraging their members to donate non-perishable items for food baskets for needy families in the area. I'm joining here with, today, by a few members of the group, Ms. Loris Lakeston, our Neighborhood Watch captain, Al Pantanita, Diane Hand, and Henry Inc. And I want to say rest in peace to one of the members, original members of the Orlida Looky Looz, who recently passed away, Armando Lozano, who we used to call Mandy's. May he rest in peace. Colleagues, after all these years of service, please join me in recognizing the Orlida Looky Looz and thank them for their commitment to taking care of the Orlida community. I'm so very proud of all of them. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Ms. Martinez. Before you do that, if I could call on Mr. Fuentes.
Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Martinez, for honoring what is near and dear to me as the Orlida Looky Looz. Having lived in Orlida for 30 years myself, having grown up there, having understood how much the city and the community has changed, and particularly in Orlida, one thing that hasn't changed is the leadership of these fine people who have always cared for the community and have worked hard. When I was a field deputy for then-council president Padilla, I was ready with lemonade because the Orlida Looky Looz would knock on the door and remind me exactly what was happening in the district, and Harry would be there on his bike, or somebody else would come in a car and say, "Come on in, jump in, we're gonna go take a look at this graffiti." And we were constantly very vigilant about making sure that the community in Orlida looked great. So thank you all for your participation, your stewardship, and your leadership. And maybe the neighborhood council system will come and go. I don't think so. Maybe things will change. I don't think so. But one thing that won't ever change is the Orlida Looky Looz. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to say a word?
Back to you, Ms. Martinez.
Hi, my name is Al Pantanita. I've been one of the original members of the Looky Looz. And what we are is not just a couple of blocks type Neighborhood Watch. We are a community Neighborhood Watch. At our meetings, we get the council representatives, the representatives from the Assembly Office, and also right now with Congressman Cardenas, you know, changing offices, we now have the congressional who attends our meetings and that there. We do everything that we just talked about, but what we do, we have businesses attend our meetings. We try to help businesses, you know, with their problems. And then what we're finding out really neat is a lot of business owners are living in our community. So when they come to our meeting, they don't come just as a business, they come as a homeowner to find out what's going on. But we have a lot of love in our community, and we do a lot of teamwork and work together. And I love working with Philippe over here. He's been very supportive of the Looky Looz for many, many years. We have wonderful people here. Most of us up here are all retired, so we can stay on the job all the time. We have a wonderful Diane Hand here is our main person with our fire department. We have a tremendously close relationship with our fire department, our police department. And what I want to say about our councilwoman, I don't really call her a nurie, but I want to go official. She is down-in-the-trenches-type person. She has a Neighborhood Watch. She knows the area. She doesn't, you know, live in the highest type, she lives in an area where she knows what's going on. It's a pleasure when you meet with her, when you can sit down there and just talk person to person about, because she knows what's going on. And we love having you as our councilperson, and we will work as hard as we can for many more years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, what I'd like to do now, if we could recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting. Call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Buzcanos, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Kresk, Krikorian, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Weston, 11 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Okay, what's the first item?
Item number eight is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. There are no speakers in the queue. Mr. Labange.
Well, when I was on the side there, Mr. Sacks approached me and I asked him about this issue, and I said, "You must talk to the clerk." I don't know if he did talk to the clerk, but he didn't want to make a comment because he thought this meeting issue was special already done. I hate to interrupt you, Mr. President. Did you fill out a card, Mr. Sacks?
No, but see, Mr. Labange, the public comment has already been satisfied because that was taken care of in committee.
The President, Mr. Sacks. Thank you, Arnold.
Good. Okay, all right. So let's prepare to, there are no speakers in the queue, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
Items nine and 10 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, we'll hold a moment on those, on that. I do have one card on 10 right now. I will hold a moment. But if we could have Donna Pearman come forward, Ms. Pearman, come forward on item 10.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale put in a card. The guard was wrong.
Excuse me, I didn't hear you, Donna.
Uh, Rick Nightingale just put his card in. He, the guard told him.
Let's, why don't we have you speak, and then I'll get to the others.
Okay, all right. Have we started? Can I get my time back?
Yes, starter time, all over again. Go ahead.
This is Donna Pearman. I'm speaking from Van Nuys, and this is showing another way that the city council wants to take away the rights to protect ourselves. Now, they'll say a resolution and only, you know, huge things, but basically, when you have terrorists from other countries that can come in through Mexico and come through here, and they don't even know that they're here, we have to be able, the ability to have equal arsenal to whatever any terrorists would have. So because, this is just reference, because like, they want to take our right to have video conferencing away, that they want to be able to take our ability or right to be able to protect ourselves, specific, as well as the police department should be able to. Believe me, there are people out there that know how to handle arsenal, know how to take the ability to have a lot of magazine, because when these terrorists come out in full force with a full mag, with a big magazine, the public should be able to, if on a, a big attack, should be able to do the same. But trust me, the time will might come when we'll get a full flood war, and the city council with their stupid resolutions has no right to be able to take our ability to arm ourselves. So let's arm ourselves and bring back video conferencing to Van Nuys. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Nightingale. Rick Nightingale, please come forward. Don't hurt yourself.
I don't need to, man, I already got crap.
Come on forward.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. Yeah, this thing about the ammunition and so forth, would you believe I turned around when I was in the Boy Scouts? I got a .22 that had a clip that went in from the bottom of it. The resolution in Sacramento, and I don't know how bad your resolution, would outlaw that gun. And I had it since I was 12 years old. I mean, what do you people want? I mean, the way the world is going, I'm sorry, if you don't protect yourself, and it's coming. It's coming, the way things are, the way everybody's so poor and is hard up for money and food and so forth. I went and bought a few more guns, no less, because it's gonna come. I live in a nice area. They heard us during Halloween, about 400 people come in my neighborhood, because I live in a nice neighborhood. Well, you think that they're gonna stop when it comes to that they're hungry and want something? They're coming to my house because they probably think that I have some money in my house, I have jewelry and so forth. And I'm gonna protect it. There's just no doubt in my mind, if somebody comes to my house, I'm gonna protect my wife, and my dog is worth more than any of them, that I'm gonna protect them. You bet y'all can protect my wife. That's right, my dog too. But I mean, this is ridiculous, that you get involved in things, you, why don't you fix the streets and everything else? That's what I'm gonna talk about later on. But you get on one of these tantrums about this, that you don't have no right to talk about. I feel sorry for all the people getting killed and so forth, but you got 7 million people in the city of Los Angeles, and look at how many people that are shooting people. It's a dirty, rotten shame. But you go as you talk percentages, that's not even 1% of one drop in a glass of water. I hate to say that, but it sounds crude, but that's the way it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Walsh? This is, we're now in the special meeting. It feels so much different. This concerns a ban on undetectable firearms. What that means is plastic guns. That's what we're talking about. We now have plastic guns. And we're 100% in favor of this. Of course, it's no skin off our nose, but... But fortunately, we have very good metal detectors here, and we don't have any problems at the meetings. 100% in favor of the motion. HollywoodHighlands.org is dynamite on my site.
Thank you. Is it a ravenous catalyst? Please come forward, followed by Arnold Sax. Welcome.
Hey, Council, welcome to Van Nuys. Nice to see you here. It takes a while to get over that hill. This is just one more thing that you have to enforce upon the public in their daily lives, what they're doing with their own personal space, which certain rights were given at birth on this planet, of all beings, to use the things on this planet as they see and to live along it, among it. You guys are talking about technology and all these things. And yet, there are, how about putting fingerprint safety scanners on triggers? So only the registered fingerprint can do it. There's a lot of technology ways, if you want to get around this gun issue, that you can become inspired upon, instead of always trying to enforce and enforce and control and come at it like we're enemies or there will be this enemy combatant coming at you from somewhere behind some dark corner. I remember when you were talking about changing banning, changing toy guns and making them colored down in LA City Council. And Mr. Parks got up and was like, "Well, how are officers supposed to be able to tell in that last instant what's going on?" And it made me think about how we, as the public, how are we supposed to, when guns are pulled on us by officers, know what's going on and react in an appropriate way? To worry about guns coming at you all the time, again, you guys become inspired. You're really so not. And it's really sad and like in my soul, how uninspired you are when you approach these things, from banning gardens to banning, feeding people on streets, to banning public sidewalks. Don't worry about what we're doing. We're all right. If we come at you and try to shoot you, worry. Otherwise, start becoming inspired, man, like, because your children will be really disappointed if you're not.
Thank you, Mr. Sax. The last speaker is Jason Ackerman. The last speaker is Jason Ackerman. Mr. Sax.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sax. Federal legislation, you want to support federal legislation. Geez, I'm just going to throw out a name real quick. Sandy Hook. You know what happened at Sandy Hook? Oh, that was at elementary school. And everybody jumped on a bandwagon to support legislation of guns that were detectable. Detectable guns. Let's have, we need legislation for detectable guns. Now, the same chuckleheads in the federal legislation are going to go after undetectable guns. What are the odds? I mean, you can't look at Sandy Hook and say, and what happened with the federal legislation that everybody was on board about regarding Sandy Hook? And I'm not, you know, the rights to bear arms, yes, no, maybe? Because there'll be situations, it could be a tsunami that hits the county. And you'll have a situation like in the Philippines where 10 million people are affected. It's not like a couple of hundred thousand, even a couple of hundred thousand. It's not like 1,000 people being affected. People are going to be wanting, because we know from the government's attitude and actions, how poorly planned things will happen for the general public. But you're going after undetectable arms. Check out detectable arms first. Do something there. Remember Sandy Hook. They're releasing the 911 tapes, which is a tragedy in and of itself. Take a listen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sax. And I think I had an Ackerman. Jason, please come forward. The last speaker on this item.
Good morning, Council. Welcome back to Van Nuys. My name's Jason Ackerman. I'm on the Insean Neighborhood Council. I'm not speaking in that official capacity right now. I want to support your support for the renewal of the Federal Undetectable Firearms Detection Act. This is actually something, this is not some crazy, you know, liberal gun control policy. This is something that was put under place under the Reagan administration. And with the advent of higher fidelity 3D printing, the possibility of undetectable firearms is becoming quite real quite fast. And I appreciate your support. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming out and sharing your opinion with us. Okay, members, there are no speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, can we go to item nine? I have ravenous catalysts. And the last speaker is Arnold Sax.
Sorry if I seemed a bit flustered last time. I was not even, the item numbers got all jumped around and came prepared to speak, and then you get all frustrated. And this one, I wasn't even sure if anybody was going to call, so I kind of just wrote cards. I have nine pages of vacations of public space, streets, sidewalks. And so all these different constructions that you're doing and building and then taking away other places. What you're not allowing for is the, like, data to remain, to prove anything useful. You're all, again, talking about tech and tech and tech. In order for data to be useful at all, you need to learn from it. Let it be and experience itself. So construction in general, you guys, just start picking the pace up here, not trying to do all this other stuff. Two, like, 300 freaking propositions to close public sidewalks and space.
Mr. President, it doesn't appear that she's back on item nine.
Okay, let's make sure you stay specifically on item nine.
And again, I just wrote cards because I had written it for three other things and they never got called. So I wrote all these cards because I came to talk about the closing down of the tunnels, but...
Okay, but now you've got to speak on item nine.
That's all my time then, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, what was it, Mr. Sax? Are you the, Arnold, the last speaker on this item?
Yeah, I don't know how many other cards I have, sir. Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sax. And the item mentions public right of way. And so again, I ask, because I've had this discussion with the city council prior on April 10th, in the Transportation Committee meeting, LA DOT report relative to establishing regulatory requirements for installing bicycle-sharing infrastructure in the public right of way, sidewalks. So are we talking sidewalks? We're talking public right of way. Metro's discussion, metro owned right of way. They're not talking about sidewalks, you can be sure of that. You have several different definitions again, and all we're looking for here is a clarification from the city council. So if you're talking about sidewalks, say sidewalks. If you're talking about right of way, that bicycles will share, then it's, is it still sidewalks? It's very difficult to know because you have administration, administrative requirements for every instrument in front of somebody's house. We've heard discussions about the planning of vegetable gardens in a different right of way. And then we heard discussions from Councilman Bonn and about how people need to have curbs before they can have streets paved. And that's a different section that has requirements. It is nickel and diming the public to death when you overlap these situations under one general heading. And then people, when they want to do something, they may get cited because that general heading doesn't address what they wanted to do. So is it public right of way? Is it the sidewalk? Is it the median? Is it the curb? What exactly are you talking about? So just clarify it.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, per Mr. Corretz's request, item 10 forthwith. So if we could adjourn this meeting and go back into the regular meeting. And that would then bring us to item, I think six or, item six? We have cards on item six. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Sax, and Jason Ackerman, if you please come forward.
Hello again. So I just wanted to comment on the maps. I used to be a geography minor for a very long time. I'm a very big fan of geographic information systems, I always know as GIS. And I would like to make sure that any maps that you guys put out are properly formatted for GIS analysis in line, you know, shape and geodatabase file formats. So that way, those of us in the community colleges and the universities can actually make some sense of what's going on in the council districts if your staff doesn't necessarily have time to mess around GIS all the time. CSUN has a very good GIS program.
Don't believe he's talking about...
Jason, get back on the item, best you can.
I was just requesting that whatever maps you guys publish be sent out in GIS format so those of us in academia can analyze it and make some sense of what's going on in the city. That was my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I think it's Mr. Walsh and followed by Arnold Sax, I think. Go on, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential. What is a final map? Well, what these final maps are, what's happening here is they're giving approval to the developer of what the developer can do and what the vote can't do. It's been reviewed by the city engineer. Final map here is for a development at North Glendale Boulevard, northernly of Clifford Street. It will make your neighborhood hell, incidentally, if you're anywhere in the area. It gives you the bond number and it gives you the quimby fee. Now, people use the word, "What is quimby fee?" That is a state obligation. When a developer decides to build something, the state of California says, "You must contribute money..." Quimby is the legislator who was in charge, who got it through. "You must contribute money to a park fund, a public park fund." And that fund is in the neighborhood that is surrounding Glendale Boulevard nor the... Now, that's where they get the money. Now, we're not going to go into how poorly spent park fund monies are and how long it takes the quimby money to actually end up being, developing a park.
Okay, let's get back on the item, John.
Well, I'm talking, I see the word quimby fee, $132,968. That's what I'm talking about. Why don't you say you just don't want to hear my...
No, 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 no. Why don't you just speak to the item? I'm not going to sit up here and debate with you, so you can go sit down.
On Mr. Walsh's behalf and the shouting out from the audience, the audience needs to be reminded that shouting out during the middle of our meeting is not acceptable and is a disruption of the...
Okay, now, please do not...
And she needs to be warned.
Sergeant, please help her understand. Now, Mr. Sax.
Well, thank you, sir. Good morning again, Arnold Sax. And I've had discussions again also regarding the quimby fee, the parquet and the other things. But more specifically here, because Councilman Corian on 11/27 mentioned, and I'm just wondering out of curiosity, because it's not listed here, funding for sidewalk repair that comes from a special fund from developers. There was an item 130588-S3 on 11/27. They spent 200, $162,000 on the Ventura Cohanga Boulevard specific plan project.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this final map. This is a...
Come on, Arnold, help me out. Get back to the item.
These specific projects here, these plans are for specific projects. So I'm wondering, is there a digression of funds? Is there an allocation of monies for sidewalk repair? Because up until Councilman Corian mentioned this special fund, I'm pretty sure that nobody in the public, excuse me, 89% of the public didn't know there was a special fund available for sidewalk repair. And how is that being spent? And is it generated through these plans? That's all I'm looking for, sir, because until he mentioned it, specific plan was voted for, and I can guarantee there was no mention of sidewalk repair being funded out of that specific plan. There would be no mention in the plans for...
He is not talking about the final map.
Mr. Sax is completely off topic, Mr. President. And that, of course, is disruptive when you continue to speak off topic. But in response to his question, the special fund, first of all, had nothing to do with the track fund. It was a neighborhood-specific fund that had to be spent on specific intersections and streets by agreement. It has nothing whatever to do with anything else that we're talking about.
Okay, Arnold, you have 13 seconds. Speak to the item.
Only asking how it's generated, sir. Not looking concerned about A, B, C and the dotted line. Only asking how it's generated. It's the first time in the six years I've been coming to meetings that I've heard about a track fund that would be used for sidewalks.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Just for clarification, these final track matters are really, it's just a ministerial duty by the council to acknowledge that the final map conforms with the tentative map. That's all it is.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's, wait, 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 wait. Ms. Catalyst? Item six?
I thank you for the clarifications and the responses from the city attorney and from Mr. Corian. If you ever want to silence us, responding to us is probably a really good way to do it.
No, why don't you just stay to the item, the item?
And that is all I got. The federal ruling was you can never silence our microphones. You can talk back.
Okay, you're not speaking to the item, thank you. Okay, she's disrupting the meeting. Sergeants, we may want to, this is her last warning. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this. Members, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item five. Mr. Motis, you still here? I thought I saw Kevin, yes. Followed by Ms. Levine, Julie, and Mr. Walsh. So those are the three people right now. So go right ahead.
As part of Computer Science Week, we should be educating our children about how to use technology safely and be educating them about the possible health effects if they use wireless technology when they're using their technology. We're not against this. And one of the things we were recognizing as part of Computer Science Week was the input of Microsoft. Well, the co-founder of Microsoft, Paul Allen, might not have gotten cancer and struggled with cancer if he knew more about the health effects from EMFs. And Steve Jobs might still be with us if he knew more about health effects from wireless. And we're talking about our collaboration with UCLA as part of Computer Science Week. You know, Dr. Kiffetz from UCLA has clearly shown behavioral and developmental problems in children who are exposed to these EMFs. And they're being exposed when they're using this computer science technology. It's irresponsible for us not to pay attention and help the public pay attention to issues that might affect their public health. If they just look in their manuals for wireless, it shows them that not, they're supposed to keep it a certain distance away from their body in order to avoid health effects. And that's right in their manuals, but most people don't know to look. For us to continue to promote this without promoting the dark secret of the technology, the wireless technology that's going on right now, and that is that there's health effects associated with this, is irresponsible on our part and I think is a part of our obligation as a public body to educate people. Belgium has just banned cell phones from children because of the possible...
Stay on the item.
And you can, you could, we need to inform our public from BioInitiative.org, Safer EMR.org. These are sources where they can learn how to use technology safely, especially as it has to do with technology, wireless. For the schools where we're putting iPads in, there's a certain distance that would make iPads safer. But of course, a wired connection would make it much safer.
Thank you, thank you, Julie Levine, followed by John Walsh, followed by Arnold Sax. Go right ahead.
Yes, kind of to add to what Kevin Motis is saying. My name is Julie Levine. I'm electro-sensitive. I became so when they unrolled the smart meter program in my community, though I opted out. The grid affected me. I became very ill. I had tremors. I had vomiting. I had diarrhea every night. I was forced to sell my home at a great loss. I mention this because with computer, with this computer education technology week coming up...
Okay, Miss, hold her time. She's back to it. Okay, you have to speak to the item which deals with... Okay, you have to speak to the item which deals with Computer Science Education Week.
I understand that, Councilmember Weston. However, I think this is specifically germane to this issue because it includes Wi-Fi, as the Microsoft representative who came just told us. And I'm very concerned about the safety of Wi-Fi for children. I myself am part of the EMF network. I've become involved because I've become so ill from this. I've been diagnosed with precancer. I have information that I would hope that as part of this Technology Week would be used around exposure and shielding. Energy Times, there's a very good article about our irradiated lives and also about the effects on children. So I'm hopeful that as part of this Education Week, you will consult with people like myself. I'm happy to be available, okay? That's it.
Thank you. That was better. Okay, Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Sacks. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. The past two speakers, the last two speakers have made some very serious points. Computer science, are you just hooking them on using computers? There are, is there going to be an educational component that brings up the deleterious effects? The fact that there's no shielding? The fact, see, I don't have to worry because, you know, I didn't, there were no computers when I was a child, so I didn't have to worry about it. But as far as children are concerned, all I hear from you is you want Wi-Fi all over the city. In fact, there is no Wi-Fi here in this city, at Van Nuys City Hall. Maybe we should all thank you for no Wi-Fi here, and maybe you should put that in to your computer science education. There's a plus and there's a minus. There are two sides. There is the corporate side of computers where they want to sell you these computers, and I'm going to hold this far away from me because I know it's damaging my brain, the iPad. And I want people to understand that if, all the students in the science education, if you can't see it, it can still kill you. Ask Steve Jobs' family, okay? You think he just happened to die of brain cancer? I'm telling you, we should, we should call this Steve Jobs Memorial Computer Science Education Week so that everyone can understand that when you play with computers, you are playing with fire.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks.
Which one? There's two of them.
There are two Sacks.
Yeah.
I only have one card from a Arnold Sacks.
I signed a false document.
Go ahead, Arnold.
Pretty scary, huh? Even I'm scared. What's interesting about this, two things during the presentation, LA US, LA Unified School District is rolling out the iPads for its students. And I'm not, I don't exactly remember because I didn't actually cut the article out, but either right after they rolled them out or right before they rolled them out, there was a study done that students are spending too much time on iPads. And then, oh, it was before. And then LAUSD decides to roll out a program that would provide students with iPads. So you wonder, the study was done, researched, and then the school goes ahead and says, "Well, you know what? To hell with the study. We're going to give them out iPads." But there was also a part of the presentation that was mentioned that technology is the future, jobs 70%. So I had this article that I did keep, and it mentions technology companies. Somebody mentioned Microsoft, Netflix, Yahoo, Yelp, and LinkedIn, how they want to increase the number of H1B, people that are eligible for H1B program, which is allowing workers to be hired from out of the country to develop programs. What happens there is they take the programs that they develop back to their home countries and they become outsourced. So essentially, they take jobs that would be created here in this country through this immigration policy, get educated at a lower rate, lower pay rate, and then take the information back to create the technology that is now necessary.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arnold Sacks. Now, Mr. Stephen Sacks. Okay, I found your card, sir. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. I just brought with me, my experience in this area indicates to me that most people just don't believe that it's very dangerous to your health. And so that's why we have iPads going into schools for every student. So I just brought the press release from the World Health Organization. I brought the release from American Academy of Environmental Science, and I brought one of the older copies of the BioInitiative, 2007. There's a 2012 edition. Maybe 20 scientists worked on this 600-page document. There's probably several hundred studies in the document itself. This is a summary for the public. And I brought a article out of the physio, pathophysiology that shows the effects on animals as well. This is a peer-reviewed study, and I would like to offer these to you if anybody would take these or if I could submit them to the record. Is there a way to do that?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's, that's about all I have to say because I think if you become convinced it's dangerous to any extent, then you'll consider a prudent avoidance idea. So you just don't do anything.
He should bring it back to the Computer Science Education Week, though.
But thank, Mr. Sacks, thank you, and hope to see you again. Ravenous Catalyst.
Well, what I brought was my database processing book. This is what it ends up looking like with highlighted of everything. Oh, that's nice. Amazing, amazing information. I'm excited for our kids these day and age to get it. What it's going to do is it's going to stop history from repeating itself. You start to see the patterns and the cycles, and we start to represent who we really are very quickly. And our, in 10 years, your children will be doing, working in jobs that aren't even created yet. It's amazing like that. What's cool about data is it, its unique gift is that it requires a purpose. It doesn't ever not show anything regardless of how many times you guys say your reports give useless information. It's because the right questions are not being asked of that information. Information tells its story loudly from the constellations to binary code, which is independent or ID-dependent, parent-needed, and mandatory type of language that is so beautiful. Like, if you want to have inserts on a parent, you must always create a child with uniqueness. That's the way that binary code talks to itself. The most important skill in database design is identifying functional dependencies. A functional dependency is something that functionally affects something, cause and effect, in other words, parent-child, in other words. We are the parent because we are what is doing things to things. The child is what happens next. Our children are going to amaze us and do amazing things, but you're going to be data-based. People 20 years ago were not data-based, so just be aware icons of all of you are being created based upon who you are, what you say, what you do, and it will be represented. So we'll know, we'll know, especially if it's harmful, too. We'll know, so let us like know.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, there are no speakers on the queue. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now we have item seven. On that item, we have Mr. Walsh. Daniel Gus, Daniel? Okay, I didn't see you. And Mr. Herman. Oh, Mr. Walsh, I've been informed you're out of time. I'm sorry about that. Daniel, why don't you come forward, followed by Mr., or constituent? Go right ahead.
Yeah, hi. I'm really concerned about, God bless this poor victim and his family, and we got to find who did this act. I'm really concerned that a lot of these rewards are more or less dog and pony shows where we don't know the criteria that they're being offered. We don't know how many have been awarded. There's no real accounting for why they're awarded in this poor man's case, this poor victim's case, but for example, not Mike Gatto's father's case. And it feels like you're using this for political reasons or make-busy reasons, and it doesn't make sense to me. So we obviously need to catch whoever did this because they're a danger to all of us. I'd like to see some accountability as to why it's being done in this case, why it's not being done in other cases, why we're giving extensions in some but not others. It's real confusing, and if you're going to have transparency, please let us know why, why it's being offered in this case or not in others. It's troubling. I'd like to know more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Laban.
For the record, to the guests here at Van Nuys City Hall and to the speaker, all this is done on the recommendation of the detectives of the Los Angeles Police Department. The detectives recommend this, so you don't need any questions. Do you hear that, young man? In the back, Daniel? Detectives, Gus, they let us know. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Constit, or constituent.
Good morning, Van Nuys, Los Angeles, all you listening today, all you residents of Van Nuys. Hi. Yes. I believe the speaker was correct. There's no transparency. And when John Walsh has always asked for the accounting and the preliminaries of the steps you take for these types of motions, I bring it to subject, where is openness? And now we have Mr. Laban speaking behind us with the speaker that just spoke because, again, he wanted transparency. And as you may see, why do we have this interference on the background when it should be up front with all of you, all of you listening in Van Nuys? Here it is, live, from Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. Laban. So in despite of what a public speaker is asking and requesting, we are --
He still has not talked about this reward.
Get back to it, Mr. Herman.
We are questioning the process of the reward because, again, it affects the taxpayers. And the taxpayers want to know, how do you channel this money to this reward for this purpose? That's all we want, is accountability. Accountability, Mr. Interference up there with me.
No, that's not the item, so stay on the item.
Again, we're all not public speakers, but when we do have a right to speak, we're speaking about accountability. Accountability upon a request of your constituents and all of us constituencies that represent not just Van Nuys but the whole area of Los Angeles. So, again, the speaker, and I don't use his name, he spoke very well about this point, as I may mention and reiterate over and over again. We want accountability.
Over and over again, he has not talked about this item.
Okay, thank you, Ms., thank you, Mr. Constituent. Okay, now, Mr. Coretts, did you want us, do we have the family or did you want to speak on it?
Unfortunately, the family was not able to be here, so we decided just to move forward with this extension. And I should also respond for the record, there, there is a criteria. It's very simple. It's generally when they are out of leads and they're looking for other ways to find the perpetrator. This is one that sometimes works. And it's something that's been done in Los Angeles and other cities for many years. It's not always successful. When it's not successful, it's harmless, doesn't cost you anything. When it is successful, you find the perpetrator. In one case, in my district, we found a hit-and-run driver, I believe, the day after we offered a reward. It was successful. We found the person and the reward was paid out. It's, it's not a great expense because more often than not, it's not successful, but it's certainly always worth the effort to find the perpetrator of a hit-and-run or a murder, and we hope that this will eventually lead to someone coming forward in this case as well.
Thank you. Mr. Coretts, and I can remember at least three reward motions that I've introduced that have been successful. So, you know, some are successful, and I agree with you, we should move forward with that. There are no speakers on the queue. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. Where are we at this point? Oh, in fact, Mr. Sadio? Mr. Sadio, it's my understanding you have a quick introduction.
I do.
Yes.
I don't want to ruin your weekend. Glad to take more. Sorry about that. So, this is a great, we should, colleagues.
Mr. President, thank you for allowing us to break in. This is an extraordinary situation. Los Angeles is home to millions of immigrants throughout the world. People come to our country seeking the American dream, and they come to the City of Angels looking for the quality of life that we all enjoy. There is a diaspora of people coming throughout the world for which their sending countries have a particular interest in their well-being here in our city. And many countries respond to that by creating Office of Immigrant Affairs with a concern to what happens when immigrants arrive here. I've been in many countries throughout the world where we've had this discussion. There's voting in countries where people allow their migrant community to vote here even though the elections are taking place in their countries. Italy is one that comes to mind that has been prolific in this area. And so today, we're very fortunate to have a congressman from the country of Guatemala. He is a congressman, but he is also in charge of their Commission on Migrants Living Abroad. He is none other than the Honorable Jean-Paul Briere Samayoya. He's a congressman. He is the person that they call the Presidente de la Comisión de Migrantes del Congreso de la República de Guatemala. And so on the occasion of his visit, we are here simply to welcome him. We will be meeting with him to talk about the large presence of Guatemalans in my district and in the city. We hold more Guatemalans here than any other city outside the capital of Guatemala City. And so it is a significant population. On my staff, all of you know Jennifer Rivera. You may not know that she is of Guatemalan origin. And so we are happy to welcome the Honorable Jean-Paul Briere Samayoya, if we may have a few words.
Okay, Congressman, welcome.
And I see we have an interpreter. You're free to speak in English and Spanish. Okay, hi, how are you? Thank you very much. Thank you for this honor. My name is Paul Briere. I'm the chief of the Immigration Committee in Guatemala, and I want to thank you to your city because we have all a very, very large amount of immigrants here living in the, in the LA area. And I know that you make a better, like, environment for them, and I want to thank you. Thank you, Carlos Roberto, Pablo, thank you very much for this, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Congressman, again, thank you and welcome. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Okay, Madam Clerk, where are we at this point?
Mr. President, a special one motion has been circulated. The city attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the LAPD has requested that the city council offer a reward for information leading to the arrest of a suspect responsible for the murder of seven-year-old Talib Peckant on December 2 at 9:00 PM at 1936 South Corning Street. Immediate action is required in order to capture the suspect for the safety of the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Let's vote on the findings, correct? So let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, and just now, it's time for us to actually vote on the, the motion? You know, this is a very different -- You know, this is very difficult. I mean, this is for a young child in the district that I represent. Many of us have seen this on television for the most part of this week. I personally don't have information where it relates to why these individuals were in a car, who shot who, or for what reason. The only thing that I could say is that this was a seven-year-old boy who was not a criminal, a seven-year-old boy who's not a member of a gang, a seven-year-old boy who valiantly fought for his life for three days this week. And I would ask that we would have a unanimous vote in support of this reward for this terrible tragedy and for this young man who was a big-- Mr. Sadio, a-- Mr. Laban's, a very big, at seven, Pop Warner football player. There are photographs of him in his uniform, good kid. Anyway, it's just tragic. So with that said, Madam Clerk, could you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Members, thank you very much. Where are we now, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, that takes counsel to general public comment.
If I could request-- if I could request Mr. Laban to come to the Presiding Officer's Chair. But I do want to call Candido Mares first. Candido, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have about ten cards. Can you hold our time, please? We have a special guest--
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Let me-- Candido, just quickly, you have ten people that are here all on one subject, or--
That is correct. So two of us can only speak. We'll limit the--
Okay, why don't you bring all ten up?
Thank you, Mr. President.
And then I'll ask for them to identify themselves, and then Mr. Laban will pull their cards. So bring your folk, and thank you very much for being so active whenever we come out here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, do you want to make your announcement? Okay.
Do we go ahead and speak? All right, our time-- okay. Thank you, Mr. President Wesson. Council members, we want to wish you a happy and healthy holiday, and thank you so much for being here in the San Fernando Valley. Yesterday, we lost a great leader in Mr. Nelson Mandela, and he was a great speaker. And one of the things that he spoke to, when he spoke to world leaders, he asked them to blossom their greatness by serving the people. We are here today to ask you to serve the people. For over a year, we have come before you asking and begging and pleading, and I'm ready to get on my knees today and ask you, council members, to please join us in trying to honor a hero of the city of Los Angeles. Today, again, is that wonderful, special human being, Ms. Monica Benavides, who-- and let's give her a big hand because there are-- you know, so many times we see people honored here, but no one, no one can equal what she has done in our community. And the surrounding us are friends and families. I think there's fourth generation here, and the woman is outstanding. She's a hero to our community. She was involved with the Van Nuys Boys Club. She was involved with St. Elizabeth's, Delano Park, Sullivan School. Not only did she raise her own ten children, her thirteen great-grandchildren, and she has great-great-grandchildren, but there are children in the community that had no one, that she was always there to help and to protect and make sure they had a meal. So again, Ms. Martinez, we're coming to you, and I know you kind of met her, but would you please come and meet Ms. the whole family? Could you come forward and just-- we'd like you to meet everyone. You are a representative in this area. And so again, what we're asking is-- we had 1,500 signatures, and what we're asking is that Delano Park Baseball Field-- she doesn't want the building where she started cleaning the field. That's where she started the programs over 50 years ago. Delano Park-- Ms. Martinez, would you come forward? Let's give Ms. Martinez a big hand of our-- so--
(noise)
We still have eight minutes, so we're just got one more speaker, Mr. President.
One more speaker.
All right. Uh, John--
Hi, I just met you. Nice to meet you.
Good morning, council members. My name is John Camara. I'm with the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. It's time to honor my hero in our community, Ms. Monica Benavides. It's a shame that we've been here for over a year and nothing has been done. Ms. Martinez, we look forward to your leadership in honoring a true L.A. treasure, Ms. Monica Benavides. Thank you.
And, Mr. President, if I have one last thing. Ms. Martinez, Linda Levittan, your new person that's working with the Van Nuys. Great things are going to happen for Van Nuys.
All right, here we go to the attention there. Just to let you know, Councilwoman Martinez, you did an excellent job with the Board of Park Commissioners in this concept. Mr. O'Farrell, you know Abe Martinez Field in North Atwater. They do name fields, but you got to go through the park commission. Thank all of you for bringing it to our attention, and Ms. Martinez will help you along with the park commission. Thank you. We will continue public comment now. Like to call on Carolyn Yummy.
Yuri.
Yuri, excuse me, Carolyn. Come on up, Carolyn.
My name is Carolyn Yuri. I represent the San Fernando Valley Arts Council, a nonprofit umbrella organization that acts to coordinate exhibits and cultural events for visual as well as performing arts in the valley. All activities in the organization are carried out by volunteer members. Our organization is undertaking a major project that we hope the city council members representing the valley will support. Contrary to popular belief, the San Fernando Valley is not a cultural wasteland, and the Arts Council is about to dispel that myth. We are working to establish a major art and cultural center in the San Fernando Valley. This center will consist of a large, open art gallery for members of local art organizations to display their works, enclosed workshops which will serve as classrooms for multiple art-related classes, and a large unobstructed floor area where up to 65 people can be seated for lectures and performances. This Arts Council has found an ideal location in a vacant building in Tarzana on Oxnard Street, just two blocks from Resita Boulevard. We have carefully analyzed the finances of the proposed center based on a similar nonprofit art gallery and workshop space that closed down a few years ago. Our current business plan shows the new center will be a break-even operation in two to three years. We are soliciting the seven members of the city council whose districts encompass parts of the San Fernando Valley to participate in establishing this art and cultural center. We made a detailed presentation to members of Councilman Blumenfeld's staff a few days ago, and we would like the opportunity to meet with each of the remaining Valley council members to present our plan. I have a handout with more detailed information about our vision, our plan, and our needs. I look forward to meeting with each of you and your staff to discuss this opportunity to establish a major art and cultural center in the San Fernando Valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We all look forward to meeting with you. Appreciate that. Kevin? I want to say it correctly. Modus, is that correct from the handwriting? Is that correct, Kevin?
It's Kevin Modus.
All right.
Yeah, I would like to meet with each council member because there are three things going on in the city right now. The plans to Wi-Fi the entire city, the plans to put wireless in the classrooms, and the beginning of putting smart meters on people's homes that use radio frequency radiation. I would like to meet with all you and really ask you to really question these plans because of the health effects associated with microwave radiation. The FCC guidelines over these admissions do not cover children, do not cover elderly, do not cover pregnant women. They only cover heating. That is, if you're burned by the Wi-Fi or burned by your cellphone or burned by your iPad. They do not cover non-thermal effects. They also only cover short-term-- they were only meant for short-term exposures, not continuous exposure like Wi-Fi and for iPads for children that are being used all day long. And there are thousands of studies that show increased risks of cancer, increased risk of heart problems, increased risk of immune system problems. If I gave you a handout, and if you look at the handout, you'll see that the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors themselves passed a motion that identifies possible long-term health effects from these admissions, also pointed out the vulnerabilities of these FCC guidelines and the problems with them. I also included in here a resolution passed by the L.A. Unified School District in 2009 that also delineates possible health effects, also talks about the weaknesses of the FCC guidelines, and recommends a wired solution rather than a wireless solution for the internet. On the front, you'll see the House of Representatives introduced a bill to educate people about adverse health effects due to wireless exposures, to develop real safety standards because our FCC guidelines are not safety standards, they're just guidelines, and to develop research that's not funded by the wireless industry. I ask to meet with each one of you and give you more information because people are sorely uneducated in this area.
That completes your comments. Thank you very much. You could hand everything to the sergeant. Kathleen Prudence, is that correct, Kathleen?
It's Paddock.
It's Paddock. Sorry.
No. It's Patton. You don't have to salute it yet.
Okay.
Okay. I have a situation. I've lived here in Van Nuys since '61. I've seen it go nothing but downhill and pick it up speed. However, I want to notify you that I support that the fire department be moved that they will go to Oxnard and Vesper. I support the fire department. They saved my husband's life, okay? And also for the police department. I'm with Jeopardy. I'm with Neighborhood Watch. Thank God for the police department. But like I said, the fire department to Oxnard. I'm for that.
Thank you very much. Julie Levine?
I want to share concerns about electro-sensitivity as an electro-sensitive-- newly electro-sensitive person. The situation in Los Angeles is increasingly difficult for many of us. I myself suffer as a result of Wi-Fi, cellphone, cellphone towers, and now smart meters and smart meter grids and the electric poles from dizziness, heart palpitations, nervous disorder, insomnia, been diagnosed with precancer, and I have severe vomiting and diarrhea. I'm woken up during the night from the pulsing. I am very concerned about the further expansion of Wi-Fi in the city of Los Angeles. There are numerous lawsuits on this around the country and around the world. And also, I am concerned because there's not one study that shows that this is, in fact, safe for children's exposure. And we're talking about constant exposure, unlike a cellphone, which is very specific, and you can turn it off. Like I said, I've been very ill. I hope people will be aware of this. Stephen Sachs, who I just met today, gave three documents, and I hope that Councilmember Blumenfeld and the other people that are involved in the expansion of Wi-Fi will read these documents. These are important medical documents, and they speak to my issues and the issues of thousands of people here in Los Angeles. They would be here today if it wasn't for all the cellphones and iPads and everything that are in here. I myself feel very nauseous, and I suspect that other people do as well because the people that are part of our network are very-- it's very difficult for them to come into county buildings. If this is further expanded, it, again, is going to impact public access. Ultimately, it's even going to go to the federal level because it is a disability. I've been-- I am now on Social Security disability. It's a growing knowledge that this is actually making people severely ill, and is often fatal, as I said.
Donna Paramon, Donna, here we go.
Okay, here we go. Marion's not well today. She's-- she's got a bad cold, and but what I want to say is-- getting rid of video conferencing made it so that she's sick today, so she come today. So she has to wait for another two whole months to be able to come down here to speak. That's wrong. We need to open video conference again so that she'll be able to speak on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday every week. I'm going to tell people they used to have video conferencing because a lot of people don't seem to realize that we used to be able to come down here every Tuesday and Wednesday. We should be able to do that again. But what you want to do is not about money, it's about silencing the people. Any way you can possibly do that. And you never know when the person is on top or off topic, because sometimes you can allow people go way off topic if it's something that you especially like. So we need to bring this back. I don't-- if you can bring about Wi-Fi, certainly you can come up with an inexpensive way to bring up video conferencing. There's-- it's no doubt about it. There is no reason why we can't do this. Look at all these people here. I bet there's probably these people here, if they could realize what's going on, that would come down here and ask for bringing up video conferencing. Because you just don't care about the San Fernando Valley. Mr. Corin, you can't say that you-- that Marion, that you never reopen it again. There's-- you've got to think about the San Fernando Valley. You just want to shut us down, and Mr. Bone and I wanted to tell them, please, you've got to do something about the 720 Santa Monica. It's getting ridiculous. People are crowding. The driver can't even see out because-- because three or four buses-- or three buses ahead of us. What's westward?
Daniel, Gus. Daniel, please.
It's the holiday season. If you need an animal, you do not need to go to L.A. Animal Services. You can go to the corner of Burbank and Sepulveda and the 405 in Sepulveda. We provided Mr. Coretts photographic evidence of soggy puppies being sold by a backyard breeder posing as a homeless man at Burbank and Sepulveda. On Tuesday, no response from the city. I spoke briefly with Mr. O'Farrell. There's a property on Coronado in Echo Park that may or may not be in his district. If they want to try to work on this without hurting the animals, there's a property with 20 or 30 animals being bred in Echo Park in South Los Angeles. We've shown this. The city has done nothing about an appliance store selling puppies. You guys have done nothing about it year after year. CPA request shows that a citation was never issued and a visit was never made. I guess that's the problem here. You know, I'm never going to refer to Mr. Coretts as a moron or an idiot. I wouldn't do that. But Mr. Coretts refers to people as morons and idiots, and then he denies it. So once Mr. Coretts apologizes for referring to people, including sitting commissioners, as morons and idiots, I'll drop the subject. But that's why they don't have public conferencing, because they think that people helping the community are morons and idiots. Now, with respect to Ms. Martinez, there is an underage prostitution problem at the northwest corner of Van Nuys and Sepulveda. I don't think I'm a moron or an idiot for reporting it. I hope you do something to protect these school kids who walk by this intersection and are approached by some really weird guys. Northwest corner of Van Owen and Sepulveda. Mr. Coretts may say we're morons and idiots for bringing these things up, but we know that we're not. In South Los Angeles, a law-- an emaciated skeletal dog chained, alive, being eaten by flies and covered with insects. Mr. Parks District, Mr. Wesson's District, how come we can't get a CPRA request on why this happens? You want us to go to L.A. Animal Services, but the city of Los Angeles doesn't promote--
That completes your public comment. Arnold Sachs, followed by Pierre Bofine, is that right, Pierre?
Okay.
All right, Pierre. After Mr. Sachs.
Thank you very much. Good morning again, Arnold Sachs. I believe earlier the city clerk opined that the track map agenda items is just city council doing some housekeeping. So that's probably one of the reasons why some of the things that the public wants were outside the housekeeping. There was a story yesterday, a firm hired to-- to-- for Port Chief Search. They're looking for somebody to take over the Harbor Department. What they should be looking for, actually, though, is how the Harbor Department came up with the $400 million increase in the projects they're doing without getting requests from the city council. They came before city council saying the project was going to cost like $400 million more, but they didn't ask for money. So they had the money. Where'd they get it from? That's what they need to find out. This unregulated proprietary department within the city. You have the Harbor. You have Lawa, which is a Johnny Carson joke, and you have the DWP. Unregulated funding billions of dollars and, oh, housekeeping. There was an agenda item yesterday-- There was an agenda item yesterday on 12-313, file number 12-0692. It's stated the deposit of revenue to the private entity contracted to manage and operate LACC. And the reason I bring it up is because you have something regarding the morals of the convention center department. Well, the entity contracted to manage and operate LACC, which is a convention center, is AEG. So why aren't they named? What can you expect when you have that kind of housekeeping ability from the city council? And then you ask questions regarding the track maps, and people want to know that interesting part of the housekeeping.
All right, Mr. Sacks, have a weekend. And then let's have Pierre come up, state your full name, Pierre, correctly.
Good morning, council members. My name is Pierre Bohfain.
And Mr. Harrow's to follow.
And I've lived in, in the valley for 50 years, 18 in Van Nuys. Many neighbors and friends and family have expressed their outrageous DWP bills that they've been paying without explanations from DWP for the excessive charges. All of you were voted into office within your district, because we believe you can make a difference in our quality of life. Here's your chance to stand with us and stop DWP from continuing to excessive billing. The tier system was developed to reduce conception in time of shortages. We no longer have that problem, and it's time for DWP to eliminate the tier system. Not six months from now, not a year from now, but as soon as possible, January, February 2014. They're using millions of dollars for bonuses, parties, unnecessary travel, excessive overtime, which could be drastically reduced by hiring temps to help as necessary, as thousands are looking for work. We ask for your support and vote to eliminate the tier system and charge the same rate throughout the billing cycle. They were financially successful prior to the tier system, and it's time for that tool to go away. Like everyone else, they must cut spending and not make us pay for their spending abuse. All DWP executives and employees should be subjected to a 10% pay cut or more for, for the next four to five years and/or furlough, as the county and other entities have done. I'm thanking you in advance for your support on behalf of the Los Angeles residents. And here, here's a, I pulled this from the computer. L.A. DWP spent nearly $100 million on troubled billing system, and they're overcharging us, and, and it's unfair. We have been paying too long for them to enjoy at our expense. So please help us out and stop DWP. Audit them, stop the tier system, and you'll help the residents. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, Pierre, thank you. Mr. Harrow Jr.?
Yeah. Mr. Harrow asked me to speak on his behalf.
Mr. Coretts?
I, I know we're not really supposed to speak much on an item that's not agendized, but I do just want to point out, we had a meeting, we pushed the DWP, and they promised to be better. Our office since has contacted them and about people that have spent hours on the phone, and they've told us, call their 1-800 number. So even our office is getting no help, and I want to say that publicly, they're not getting their act together, even, even in our efforts to help people that are sitting on for hours. So they really need to respond, and, and thank you for coming here.
Mr. Coretts, thank you. Pierre, we do not transfer cards. We'll note this in the file. Mr. Harrow wanted to speak, but we don't transfer time. Thank you very much. Next speaker will be Fraley Becker. You can give that to the sergeant. Give it to the sergeant. Fraley Becker.
Good morning, members of the council.
Followed by Chuck.
My name is Fraley Becker. I live in Van Nuys, where I've been a resident for over 14 years. I am retired and live on a fixed income. I'm a single homeowner. Yet for me alone, my last three DWB bills of water and electricity combined were over $550, over $700, and over $600 respectively. One of my neighbors was absent from her home for six months due to a medical condition, and her house was unoccupied. Yet during that period, she received DWP bills in the high 300s to the mid 400s. All this, my bills and hers, can be documented. I've asked myself how I could reduce my utility bills. By not showering daily? By not washing dishes? I already take my car to a car wash. When I'm online, I do not read magazines, books, transcripts, or scripts, and do not stay online for long periods. I watch very little television, because I lived 17 years in a foreign country that had only one television channel that finished at 10:00 p.m. I'm therefore not a big TV fan or user. I go to the cinema and legitimate theater. I don't know what I can do to keep my utility bills down, except to follow the recommendation of the Los Angeles Times and support an audit of the DWP. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Chuck Tedden, Chuck Tedden, followed by Rick Nightgale.
Good morning, council members. Chuck Tedden. In October, Channel 35, the city channel, that is owned by and run by our city government, that is supported...
Chuck speaking to the microphone.
Okay. That is supported by the city of Los Angeles viewers and taxpayers, which means it is our channel was removed of access because it changed the cable. So you can't watch our city Channel 35 anymore to know what's going on. Time Warner read an advertisement on Channel 35 that said, quote, "Bring your picture back. Order your digital adapter box from Time Warner, and your picture will be restored, and you will have access to Channel 35." But when you call Time Warner, they tell you, you can order a digital adapter box for free if you're a subscriber, or you can order service, and you'll get a free adapter box so you can watch Channel 35. But if you're not a Time Warner subscriber, you can't order this free box to bring your picture back on Channel 35. It's shameful to be hostage for thousands of Angelenos not being able to watch our city Channel 35, to have to pay every month for the privilege of being able to watch a public access channel that we pay for with our taxes. You know what? It's not right. Everyone that lives in the city should be able to watch this. It's shameful and disgraceful that our officials would allow companies like Time Warner to hold people hostage, especially the ones that have older TVs, that can't afford to watch cable TV, and deny them public access to watch the city channel, Channel 35 that we already have. Our city council members, if you care about the denial of this access, fix the problem. They should not hold us hostage. We should be able to watch our channel and know what's going on.
Very good, Chuck. Thank you very much. Chuck, go to the ropes, please. Mr. Wesson wants you to meet with someone to follow up on this. We want to follow up on it. Rick Nightgale, thank you. Lisa Schechter, report to the ropes.
And this goes right back, same thing. I just found out that Councilman Cadeo, the turnaround, got a million dollars, since he's a new council person. Why don't everybody chip in out of their little nest stick that they get under the table to help their communities, especially our council people in the valley? Put up 20 grand. Then we could have it again. But no, they want to just kind of keep our mouth shut, you know? They don't want to hear from us, because we're a thorn in their butt, and so forth. So why don't they do something like that? Let's go back to the other thing that I really came down about, is that all this money's given out, but why is every time it comes around that? We want our trees trimmed, we want our sidewalks taken care of, we want our streets taken care of, but you all have the money to do all this other garbage? Give it to here, give it to there. I hate to say it, but always the poor people come first above anybody else, so the middle class and so forth can pay for it. When do we get something out of the city, besides another bond measure, so we can pay for it again? I've been down here for how many years now? White Oak is still between Parthenia and Nordoff. You can't drive down it. I'm waiting for somebody seriously to get hurt. That's what's going to happen. Somebody's going to get hurt, and then they're going to sue the city. And I'll be the first one to be on the witness stand saying, "I told you so." I mean, it just, it's, it just goes on and on. You can't drive down the streets, but no. Remember years ago, the older people, when it used to say on your gas pump, the tax for the gasoline is for street maintenance? You don't see it no more, because they pull for each the money. And now it's in the other thing.
All right, that completes your comment. Be careful, have a good weekend. Jason Ackerman?
There was a popper stopper on the floor. All right. So again, thank you for coming to Van Nuys. So bear with me for a second. It's really hard to get down to City Hall in downtown. We are, we in the San Fernando Valley are at least a third of, of the population, and I think that we deserve a third of the attendance. And if we, and if you're not going to come out here a third of the time, you guys come, which you guys don't, and a whopping like 3% of the time you're out here, if you calculate, you know, three meetings a week times 56 weeks, and you, once every two months, that's about 3% by my math. I heard a nasty rumor that I'd like some clarification on, that election turnout results will be tied to neighborhood council budgets. So that those who, neighborhood councils who have low turnout will see their budget cuts. I wanted, I want to know if that's true or not, or where this comes from. And please come out here more often, and or at least bring back the video conferencing. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a rumor. That's not right. All right, here we go. Mildred Peterson, is that right? Mildred? No address? A 310 area code? I'll hold that, ask the clerk to help me. How about Ravines? Kavanaugh? Yeah. Ravines?
Ravine Catalyst.
Ravine Catalyst, okay, we got you.
Yeah, video conferencing, you guys ended up saving yourself, I think at the time it was like 36 grand is what it was costing, so you guys wanted to get rid of that. And this, I'm sure the money isn't directly tied, but the shutting down of the tunnels that was talked about earlier, it costs 46 grand, or 48 grand to fill a tunnel with cement, let alone all the, the cost of making cement at 3,000 degrees to heat it up. So again, video conferencing should be no issue. The Time Warner cable thing, it's free for the first year. After that, it's 99 cents a month that you're going to have to pay in order to get the public access channels that you guys gave away, when you gave away our public access TV, when you decided to take away the studios that we could produce our own things, which Reagan gave away in the 80s, when we owned the airwaves, the public owned the TV airwaves. This meeting is your job review. It is your opportunity to update your bosses, us, on what's going on and what you're doing. We hire you, we pay you, so that's what's going on. That is what is up. With you silencing the microphone, federal ruling, it's a violation of our freedom of speech to silence the public's microphone for the two minutes we're up here. So I don't care what, how off-topic you believe, which is the phrasing, which phrasing is important when you database, because those words either can mathematically be related to something, or they cannot. Belief cannot be mathematically calculated, so it cannot be in databases. What I would like to see happen is a website set up where the public is used as your committees. It takes you paying one website guy one month, or I'll do it for free if they'll use it. You set up a website where the public can go on and register, and they become the committees that you go to for your recommendations about all this stuff. In Santa Monica, they hired 2,000 employees, and only six of them were hired by the people we hired. So they're hiring a bunch of people that...
All right. That completes your comment. Let me try this here for Mildred Mary Jane Patient. Is Mildred here? Mary Jane Patient? Okay, I'm going to hold that there. Monica, Alex ago? And Monica, if you could pronounce your name correctly for me, sorry.
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Monica Alexenko. I'm the Area Neighborhood Watch Captain for Kestner Ridge. I and many of my neighbors who are here, and many who couldn't be here, wish to thank our councilwoman, Nuri Martinez, for supporting the new fire station set to break ground on Oxnard Boulevard this January. We have heard the disconcerting reasons against the fire station by the people who live in the new Sherman Oaks area, south of Oxnard Boulevard. One reason was being that there is a pregnant woman who lives close by. Another reason was that there is a child with special needs who lives there. As a person who actually had their life saved by firefighters a year ago, I find these remarks absolutely outrageous and egregiously offensive, just as offensive as one of their comments four years ago, when they were pushing to break away from Van Nuys, and they stated that the complexion of their area was more in line with that of Sherman Oaks. As to a letter of support for the new Sherman Oaks residents by the VNNC, Van Nuys residents continue to scratch their head in amazement and disbelief in what the VNNC council does, very often to the detriment of our community, which is why many people are pushing to have the group actually disbanded. The bottom line is, we need the fire station on Oxnard Boulevard. It is the perfect location. It is a wide street, virtually traffic-free in the evenings. Oxnard Boulevard needs a positive entity that provides safety and stability for the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I, city clerk, correct me, this is Medical Mary Jane Patient. Is there someone known by that here? No one, so file the card. Stephen Sacks?
Earlier today, I gave you some documents with scientific proof that, about how dangerous radio frequency radiation is. Now, I just wanted to get a little more personal. I have a friend, Allison, who's also a neighbor of mine, who is sensitive to RF radiation, and she is unable to come to meetings like this, because there are too many cellphones turned on. But, so I wanted to mention that. Secondly, I wanted to let you know a little bit about my background. I'm trying, I'm part of a group that's trying to stop a cellphone tower from going into my little hometown. It's just too close. We want to move it out of town, so it's away from homes, just too close from homes. But in, in our efforts to do that, there is a standing appellate court decision that has allowed a, a movement of a cell tower, or a selection of a cell tower further away from people via the principle of prudent avoidance. So I just ask that you take that into consideration in your Wi-Fi decisions. If you can prudently avoid close contact with Wi-Fi, it's better. So just be aware of that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Herman?
Los Angeles, here I am in Van Nuys now, joining all of you and all my councilmen. But under a reflection of, let's reflect this to the record, if I recall correctly, during Mr. Corrigan's remarks about what? No one at this meeting has been asked to leave, excluded, banned, disruptive of conduct? We have abilities to speak, but sometimes, I know that, yes, you guys hide our cars, misplace our cars, throw them in the trash, that's fine. But we still have the ability to speak. We are constituents, and as you heard, all our constituents upset about the DWP, I'm very upset, because I respect not just elderly, but disabled people, that you affect their lives by your negligence to take action, instead of what Mr. Coretts said, "Well, we're doing something about it." No, do more. Support your elderly population of constituents. On another point, I was told by a certain gentleman of this council, ridiculous, scurrilous, personal attacks prohibited by the, what, Brown Act? No. Again, federal ruling. Again, federal ruling. Zuma Dog. Zuma Dog, thank you. Yes, thank you. Applause to Zuma Dog and all of you in Venice Beach. Thank you for giving us this right to speak under the Brown Act and other actions of what our First Amendment rights are and about. Yeah, I just came here just to lull a gag today, because it's Friday, I got more important things to do, and as Mr. Coretts smiles and laughs, he finds it funny. But what about the genocides of, of what, the Armenians? What about that? Killing of all men? You're doing that to a homeless population here? Where? Los Angeles. We have an enormous group of people, that of your American citizens, those people who serve this country, and also a population of our families who are on the street, who are homeless... are homeless because of your ridiculous dumb actions. Yes, ridiculous and dumb. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the last card, Mr. Walsh, and also Mr. City Attorney for statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. A speaker will be removed for the utterance of obscene comments as defined pursuant to Miller versus California. Mr. Walsh's comments on Wednesday were obscene, and he should avoid repeating those comments. And I'd like to also use this opportunity to apologize to my client, the City of Los Angeles. Its officials and staff are not adequately or more adeptly advising council's presiding officers that obscene language has no constitutional protection, and that speakers should be ordered removed for making obscene comments.
Mr. Walsh?
You're really afraid of me, aren't you? You're really afraid of free speech. Why only John Walsh? Nothing I said was obscene. You want to know what's obscene? Sexual harassment. Did I inject sex into the city council? No. You're under two sexual harassment investigations. You have treated the people you work with like garbage. And I'm showing, is showing you a picture of Glenn Dake? Who is, I'm showing it to you right now. Go to my website to find out. Was it obscene when I went and asked the mayor yesterday about his relationship to Glenn Dake under public comment at MTA? Go to Glenn Dake. Nothing I said was obscene. And I want you to know that my great-great-great-grandfather, Murphy, fought in the Revolutionary War, so I could use this language. And he was crippled in the Revolutionary War, so I could use this language. And you, all the city council is doing is worrying about John Walsh's obscene language and throwing me out. And remember, you threw Zuma Dog out, and now the second Zuma Dog trial in federal court will decide in front of a jury how much money you will pay.
Allow the speaker to speak.
I got an extra ten seconds. They can clap all they want. You, you deserve to clap up here. HollywoodHighlands.org, do you understand that a jury may find for your removing Zuma Dog, you have to pay a million, two million dollars? Because he won the lawsuit. And there's nothing I said, and the only thing obscene in this room are all fifteen of you. How dare you say I was obscene? Give me a letter. No, what words did I use? Garbage, foul, ugly, disgusting.
That completes the public comment. Everyone have a good weekend, and let me turn it over to the President's City Council, Mr. Wesson.
Madam Clerk, what's before this body?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Okay, now would be the time for announcements. Mr. Bloomingfield, followed by Mr. Fuentes.
Just want to let folks, since we're in the valley, know I'm doing a holiday open house and art reception in, in my office. It's a municipal building, Tuesday, December seventeenth, four-thirty to seven, and the public is, is welcome and invited.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fuentes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, the mighty Tigers of San Fernando High School play South Gate in the Los Angeles City Section Division Two Championship Game at four PM. It's going to be a great one. See you there.
Thank you, Mr., wait a minute, we got to let Mr. LeBrons jump in on it.
On, on, just on behalf of Mr. Boos, guy, and on Mr. Parks, at eight o'clock, Narbor Gauchos will face the Crenshaw Cougars in the big game tonight. And then tomorrow, Bernstein, no, excuse me, Politech plays on New Schools, which name I don't know. So Politech got in, Mitch. Good job, Mitch, you got them in the championship. I also want to announce, today's the ninetieth anniversary at Toluca Lake, Toluca Lake in the San Fernando Valley. So all is welcome to the open house tonight on Riverside Drive in Toluca Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to invite everyone to a community walk that I'm holding in my district tomorrow morning. We're going to meet at one-twenty-three South Alvarado Street in the Westlake Neighborhood at Clinica, Monsignor Oscar Romero, and we're going to distribute information about how to better access city services, and all are invited to attend and walk with us. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Price?
Yes, Mr. President, members, just want to invite neighbors to come out and join us at Avalon Gardens. Tomorrow, we're going to have a community dig-in, planting some gardens, and we're going to have a lot of fun. Seven oh, seven oh one East Eighty-Eighth Street in Los Angeles, Avalon Gardens. Join us at nine AM for a community dig-in. Thank you.
Mr. Fuentes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I almost forgot, I was so excited about my Tigers playing today in the championship, second year in a row. Tomorrow at nine AM, the Pacoima Holiday Parade will be going down Van Nuys Boulevard, right in front of our city building there, my district office, and you all are welcome to come as well. It's going to be great.
Thank you. Any more announcements? Seeing none, if all members and everyone that's in the chambers would please rise for adjourning motions. In fact, with your permission, I'd like to, to start out first. It is with fondness and sadness that I rise today to adjourn in the memory of a, a friend and a very committed member of the Los Angeles School Board, and that's Marguerite Lamont. She passed away yesterday at eighty years old. At eighty years old, she was in San Diego with, I think, another school board member, attending an annual conference. And no matter how she felt, and it was apparent to all of us that she was in a weakened condition, she just never, ever stopped working until the, the, the bitter end. She was a graduate of Southern University, and she earned her BA in education. From there, she, and she graduated summa cum laude. She earned her master's in education in nineteen sixty-five from Louisiana State University, and I believe she was the first African-American woman to serve as a visiting professor in their undergraduate program. Marguerite cared a lot about the children, not just in the district that she represented, but the entire city of Los Angeles. She referred to each and every one of them as her babies, and fought for them like a mother would. Just a little interesting tidbit and aside, when there was a campaign going on several years that my chief of staff was engaged in, it was there where she met her last husband at this party. So he was like the matchmaker for Marguerite. She will truly be missed. She was a stylish person, and you'd see her in these wonderful designer clothes and, and what have you, and I will always remember her as being very stylish. Even when I was with her, I worried about how I was dressed, which rarely happens. So with that, I think Ms. Martinez?
To join you in a journey in memory of Ms. Lamont, I had the pleasure of serving with her on the school board. She was a dynamic leader, wonderful woman, represented her district really well, so I appreciate that, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Price, and then Mr. LeBrons.
Yeah, I too want to just express condolences over the loss. She was a real pioneer as we, as we came to know her, before she came to California, had been a trendsetter, a real, real icon. And on the school board, she was certainly an advocate for the kids, for teachers, but certainly for kids, was a strong advocate for the arts, and I think will be sorely missed, certainly not just in our school district, but children up and down our state.
Mr. LeBrons?
Mr. President, I like what you said about how she's always focused on the children, on the kids. Mr. Price just said when the periods of redistricting there, on a school on Vine Street, she was right in there where we started the first partnership. Now it's in your district, Mitch, that, that she got money, we got money together with the CRA when it was still happening, and put a park in a needed area. Hollywood, they didn't have too many parks, and she was always pitching for the right thing.
Thank you. And I want to make this announcement to the clerks. I want to make sure it's crystal clear, Evak, wherever you are, this is how we want to do this. All members will be on this adjourning motion, but what I would like is to have three members of this council have a signature. That would be Ms. Martinez, Mr. Price, and myself. So I want to make that crystal clear to the clerks. With that said, adjourning motions, Mr. Price?
Mr. President, I just want to join with millions of people around the world, and as we adjourn in the memory of Nelson Mandela. While Mr. Mandela fought to change the inequities in this country, his struggles resonated with people around the world. He's left an indelible mark on all of us. His fortitude, his grace, and his humbleness are certainly standards by which we all should govern ourselves. Mr. Mandela spent twenty-seven years in prison after being convicted of treason by a white minority government, only to forge a peaceful end to a white rule by negotiating with his captors after his release in nineteen ninety. And interesting to note, although he served, he served twenty-seven years, you know, he was offered freedom in fifteen years, and he refused to accept freedom under the conditions which were just not acceptable. He led the African National Congress, long a banned liberation movement, to a resounding electoral victory in nineteen ninety-four, and became the first president and the first father, if you, if you will, of South Africa. Mr. Mandela, who was ninety-five, served just one term as South Africa's president, but his decades in prison and his insistence on forgiveness over vengeance made him a potent symbol of the struggle to end his country's brutality, and it showed the power of peaceful resolution in even the most intractable conflicts. Years after he retreated from public life, his name still resonates as an emblem of his efforts to transcend decades of racial division and to create what South Africans now call a rainbow nation. His moral leadership and example will live on forever. We are all better for his contribution as a lawyer, as a political prisoner, as president, as a world statesman. May he finally rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Price. And members, our flags have been lowered because of this phenomenal man. And I think Mr. LeBrons was here, I know I was here, as a staffer when he visited City Hall, and I had an opportunity to shake his hand. He was just a very phenomenal figure, kind of like that uncle, that wise uncle that each and every one of us have. Mr. LeBrons, if it's on this subject?
Yeah, absolutely. And in nineteen ninety in June, towards the end of the month, after his release, he came to Los Angeles, and the greatest impression I had of that day on the steps of City Hall, when there were many more events than we have in this era, is Mr. Bradley and the strong feeling that he had as our representative of our mayor of that day to see Nelson Mandela on the steps of City Hall, and presented him the key to Los Angeles. And right now, in these last days, of those of us at some time in the day when we catch the news, to learn so much about the true history of what took place in his life, Nobel Prize winner, all what he did, and how he refused to, to ever have harm towards people, but to bring people together. It truly is remarkable man that he was, and to be on our City Hall steps, and to see Mr. Bradley, that's the big impression I remember, Herb, because it was such a joyous day to see Nelson Mandela on the steps of City Hall. And then the program, which I was not at, but at the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum, where he filled the coliseum, this was an impactful person of the, of both centuries.
Yeah, you're right. And I remember Mayor Bradley, and believe it or not, the other person I remember was Willis Edwards, who was somehow there. Now, Mr. Corretts, did you want to speak to this adjourning? Go right ahead.
Yeah, I just want to add that Nelson Mandela and his effort to end apartheid really connected with everyone around the world. And in a way, we, we all did our small part, because cities and states and countries all over the world did divestment actions to try and encourage his release and to encourage an end to apartheid. And of course, Los Angeles did that. I had a chance to do that in West Hollywood. It was done really around the world, and he was not just the conscience of South Africa, he was really the conscience of all of us.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, did you want to speak to this adjourning? Or you have your own? Mr. LeBrons?
To Maxine Waters, is a member of the California State Assembly. Really, it started in California, when you mentioned divesting, and all the work that Maxine did in the California Legislature and cities, it truly, for those younger members of the staff of the city, as I look around here, read this history, because it's very, very impactful.
Okay, any other, Mr. Krikorian on this? Yes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Number of years ago, Mr. Price and I participated in a delegation to, to South Africa, and although we didn't have the privilege of meeting President Mandela, we did have the opportunity to stand in his cell, in Robben Island. And his cell, the cell that he spent nineteen years in, was about the size of two of these desks. And what struck me the most, I think, about that visit was in chatting with one of the prisoners that had been spending time there with him, who said that he now has a neighbor in his community who was one of the jailers at Robben Island. And they're both participants in their neighborhood, they go to each other's homes, and are both committed to the new South Africa. And that attitude that's pervasive throughout South Africa now seemed absolutely impossible under the apartheid era, and it could only have been possible because of the history-making, extraordinary leadership of, of Nelson Mandela that's inspired everyone in the world. And I think so much of the challenge that we have here in Los Angeles, as we try to figure out our way through and dealing with the pluralistic diversity that we have, the inspiration that we can draw from the history of South Africa, and particularly the leadership of Nelson Mandela, I think, is, is very profound. He was deeply committed to not only ending apartheid, but then leading in the post-apartheid era through truth and reconciliation. And both of those components of the future of South Africa were vital. Was it necessary for everyone to be truthful about the abhorrent practices of the past, but then also to move forward as one country in reconciliation? And it takes an extraordinarily courageous leader to be able to be committed to that, and he personally saved that country from devolving into violence and revolution. He personally, he, Bishop Tutu as well, but no one more than Nelson Mandela. And it was, in my view, one of the most remarkable instances of heroic leadership that we've seen by anyone anywhere in this world in the twentieth century.
Thank you. That was well said. And I tell you, Mr. Krikorian, I'm looking at the desk in the center aisle, imagining it double-sided, or double-size of it, and I'm getting claustrophobic. So that is unbelievable. Mr. Fuentes, did you want to speak on this one? Then I have at least one more speaker on this one, and Mr. Gilbert Sadiel.
Well spoken, Mr. Krikorian. I think it, his most remarkable act was the reconciliation that took place in South Africa after the defeat of apartheid. That was extraordinary. The world was surprised, it was unexpected. The expectations were, were that civil war would break out. There was so much pent-up anger at living under apartheid. The inspiration of his movement of the ANC, of his leadership and participation in the ANC, a broad coalition of many organizations, was extraordinary. And then twenty-seven years, imagine that, twenty-seven years, they're not, there's staffers here not that old, twenty-seven years in jail, bypassing an opportunity to leave early because of his commitment to democracy and equality. He was an extraordinary leader. I was proud of the efforts of, of our union, SEIU, and Local Six-Sixty, and part of his reception here when he- Local 660, and part of his reception here when he came to the Coliseum, and thousands, literally 100,000 people smashed into the Coliseum for that reception. As it's been stated, it is a great example for our city of bringing people together around values and a vision. And we are all indebted to this very extraordinary gentle giant of a human being. And we should, this city should acknowledge the honor and privilege of his presence in 1990, but more importantly, the lessons that he's taught the entire world for governance and leadership.
Well said, Mr. Sadiel. Well said to everyone. Okay, so I want to go to Ms. Martinez and then Mr. Fuentes for other adjourned motions.
Members, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Armando Lozano. On November 23rd, 2013, Armando suffered a massive stroke due to his disease that he had contracted when he served in Vietnam. He passed away at Holy Cross Hospital with his wife Gloria, his son Richard, and his daughter Lisa by his side. Armando was born in El Paso, Texas on May 31st, 1944. He attended University of El Paso, Texas, where he received an associate degree in arts in 1972. Armando joined the United States Navy and served from 1962 to 1966, I'm sorry, and was sent to fight in the Vietnam War, where he served as radioman, and was honorably discharged on November 14th, 1966. Upon being discharged from the Navy, Armando worked for a short time as a deputy chief in the El Paso jails. Armando married his wife Gloria in July 28th of 1968. In 1974, he moved his family to California, where he gained employment in the aerospace industry and began working for PM Engineering in Van Nuys, California. In the late 1980s, his boss turned over the company to him, and he became self-employed and later worked at another company called Zipco. Armando retired from Zipco in April of 2013 due to his declining health. Armando was also one of the original members of the Alida Lucky Luz and was a block captain as well. He is survived by his wife Gloria, his son Richard, who is a 22-year-old veteran Los Angeles Police Department officer, and currently is a detective out of the Major Crimes Division. His daughter Lisa and his four grandchildren, Sonny, Carlos, Annalisa, and Christian. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Mr. Fuentes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to adjourn today in the honor and memory of Michelle McManus. She started her career with the City of Los Angeles in 1972 as a management assistant with the Los Angeles Police Department. In 1976, she resigned to be a full-time mother and wife. In 1979, she returned to the city workforce and worked in the Bureau of Engineering, the Chief Administrative Officer's Office, and the Department of Aging before joining sanitation as a senior management analyst in 1994. Michelle's dedication and excellent work ethic earned her the respect of colleagues and sanitation's executive management. She was quickly promoted to assistant division manager and eventually division manager as a chief management analyst. While Michelle ran the citywide recycling division for a brief period, her real professional passion was in the administrative and fiscal affairs of the Bureau. She became the division manager of the administration division in 2005, where she became well-known for her morning management chats over coffees, how she managed by walking around, a very good practice. She always made sure that the Bureau was being run in accordance with all of the rules and procedures that many of us helped pass. She had a real affection for what she did. She passed away Saturday, November 30th, at the young age of 63, after succumbing to a long battle with cancer. Services will be held Monday, December 9th, at Holy Spirit Catholic Church in Fountain Valley. She is survived by three siblings, her sons Frank, Michael, William, her daughter Julie, and their spouses and 11 grandchildren. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Sadiel?
Yes, and finally, I ask that we close in memory of Mr. Raul Martinez Sr. In 1974, Mr. Martinez bought an ice cream truck, took it over to Cypress Avenue over in my district, and began to sell tacos. And people thought he was crazy. People didn't think that was a good idea, wasn't a business model. He's the precursor to all the trucks that you see in the city and all the gourmet trucks. Mr. Raul Martinez is also known as King Taco. And so King Taco is like the Dodger Dog of tacos. There's not one person who doesn't like them. 20 locations throughout the area. He and his brother also opened up another chain called El Tarino. And he died just this Tuesday at age 71. His body's been returned from Mexico. His stores are being closed in memory. And the thing about him, if you grew up on the east side, is not just the long lines of tacos at 2:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon, but also the, his generosity. He funded many of the sport teams in the area, baseball, Little League Soccer. He was always very philanthropic before that was popular. And he's going to be sorely missed, and obviously, his legacy will live on, but a great loss to the city and the region.
Thank you. And I share, I agree with you. I don't know one person that doesn't love King Taco. I am a witness. Yeah, members, any other adjourned motions? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.